Good evening. It's seven o'clock and we will begin the Urbana City Council meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here. The first item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, November 4th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ammons, seconded by Jacobson, any additions or corrections? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? I don't see any. Anyone who would like to address the Urbana City Council, please fill out one of these cards and you will have five minutes to talk on the topic of your choice. Or if you don't want to talk, you can just say what you, you know, the idea that you want to express to us. So are there, I have two people so far. Brenda Keenig? You want to talk about CU folk and roots? Come on up to the seat up there. And the microphone is the little black thing. Oh, you have things to hand out, okay.
Can I show some pictures?
You, okay.
Put your drive into the computer.
Thank you for helping.
Mm-hmm. You're welcome.
And it should go right up there, yeah.
Just one here?
That's good. Thank you. I don't know if I just want to, I just click it right?
Yep, just click and it'll open.
Okay, great. All right, thanks. Sorry. My name is Brenda Keenig and I am the Chair of the Steering Committee of the Champaign-Urbana Folk and Roots Festival. As some of you may know, we just finished our fifth year in Urbana a couple of weeks ago. We had a festival on November 1st and 2nd, 2013. And let me say thank you, first of all, to the city of Urbana. It's a fantastic, fantastic place to have a festival with many supportive businesses and supportive institutions and the Urbana Public Arts Commission, who gave us the seed money in 2009 to start the festival and continues to support us to this day. Anyway, I was wondering if anybody had actually been there?
Yeah.
Good, oh wow, fantastic. Four people, great, fantastic. That's nice. So for people who didn't get a chance to go this year, I thought I would bring along some pictures and kind of tell you a little bit about what happened. As you can see there, we are, the fifth annual festival took place in over a dozen venues throughout downtown Urbana this year. We are all volunteer run. We presented over ninety-one, ninety-one free and low-cost, all ages activities, ages, all abilities, participatory activities, and folk performances. And they ran continuously in businesses, cultural institutions, and art centers throughout downtown Urbana. The festivals include performances, dances, workshops, jams, song circles, storytelling, it goes on and on. We became a 501(c)(3) organization in 2010. The festival has a particular interest in evolving and unique forms of folk music and art, especially forms to break down barriers between audience and performers while also providing the occasion to preserve local traditions and histories. Over eighty individual volunteers, people volunteered a four-hour shift or more during the festival. That included emcees, sound techs, ticket takers, food providers, just a lot of people volunteered. We had also, we also have a steering committee of eight to ten individuals that meet year round to plan for the festival. We also organize year-round shows and events. All our committee meetings are advertised and open to the public. We have a four-to-five-person booking committee and we spend nine months scouting out and securing high-quality national, regional, and local talent in the folk arts, with a special interest in bringing in up-and-coming, overlooked, and/or under-the-radar artists. This guy right here is Richie Sterns from Ithaca, New York, a fantastic banjo player, probably one of the best banjo players in the country, and he rarely makes it out of state, so we're very lucky to find him and get him. Our performances, we have performances throughout the festival. This is a blues guitarist, Del Rey, from Seattle, Washington. She was amazing. She does this Memphis Minnie impersonation. She's just, just great. She plays to a standing-room-only crowd at the Iron Post. We also have really fantastic local acts. This is the Orpheum Mandolin Orchestra from Central Illinois, and they have every size of mandolin you can imagine and they play, played at the Urbana Free Library on Saturday afternoon. We have Wagon Fire, an Urbana-based gypsy jazz band that entertained at Bouvines at the Corkscrew Wine Emporium. There's The Viper and his famous orchestra from Milwaukee. They played a family show at the Landmark Hotel Ballroom, and that was fun for kids of all ages. We have Los Condenados Sueltacos. They performed at the Spurlock Museum during the festival. We have the Bluegrass Band, the Whipstitch Sallys, from Indianapolis, and they played at the Rose Bowl. We have dances. We had a square dance at the Landmark. The Landmark Hotel Ballroom really provided a fantastic venue for our festival this year, mainly for our dances and dance workshops. We have the Champaign Central High School Jazz Ensemble. They provided music for the swing dance on Friday night. The festival attendees could choose from many free or low-cost dance events. So we had swing, Yiddish, square, contra, Cajun, Irish, international folk. All dances had live music, had a real person calling or instructing. We had storytelling and sing-alongs, included eight to ten storytelling sessions and workshops at the Urbana Free Library, as well as campfire sing-alongs on the Iron Post patio, shape note, family singing at the Independent Media Center.
You have one minute left.
Thank you. Here's some pictures. Workshops, jams, blues guitars. I'm going to go through this quickly, just to show you guys some of the amazing things.
I move to give her two more minutes.
You're going to, thank you, thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We do community outreach. In 2013, the festival, with Spurlock Museum's support, organized and funded a school assembly for Leo Elementary's bilingual program. Major funders in 2013 included the Urbana Public Arts Commission, UC Banks, SUSA Archives, and I can go on. We have just quite a long list and I sent around our program right there. I gave it to Phyllis, so she can let you know. We also collaborate with a lot of different organizations that already exist within our community, including the Community Center for the Arts, the Urbana Free Library, Piper's Hut Music Series, et cetera. Let's talk a little about the economic impact of our festival. The events take place entirely within three blocks epicenter of downtown Urbana. We have about fifteen hundred people who attended the festival, and they purchased food, drinks, hotel rooms, and more. And they experience Urbana as an arts-friendly and vibrant place to visit or live. Right here is a picture of two hundred, sorry, it's not the best picture. We had over two hundred people attending our lunchtime buffet at Pietos during the festival. That's at Lincoln Square Mall. We have many business partners and venues. There's Strawberry Fields there. You can see a band playing, festival performance at the Heartland. The CU folk and roots helps market and promote Urbana as a fun, art-loving community. And in 2013, we spent over, it says we will spend, but we did, we spent over $5,000 marketing the festival as a distinctly Urbana event. If anybody saw our ads on the MTD buses, they all say downtown Urbana. Attendance at the 2013 festival increased thirty percent over the 2012 festival. This is a pretty amazing phenomenon. This is really, we're really beginning to catch notice and there's a buzz, especially during our free daytime events. Total attendance at the 2013 festival is over twelve hundred people. This is according to all our venue counts. I just want to talk about how important cultural events are to urban development. Really, cities who successfully harness cultural events as an integral part of a broader development strategy will reap benefits. So please, please, come out next year, in 2014, see, come and see the festival for yourself if you didn't get a chance to do it. We really working hard for our community and for our local musicians and want to do something really special and make Urbana a great place to live. So thank you so much for your support.
Thank you for all your hard work. Dennis has something to say?
Yeah, well, okay, so I attended some of the things. The Viper concert, he was so funny. His song about the monsters are coming, I loved it. And Del Rey, incredible player, musician, and humorist. I guess what I'd like to ask you is, you've done so much work with really a large crew of people that you somehow pulled together to make this thing have happened.
It's a miracle.
This makes me, this makes the Sister City Program look, you know, simple. So, and I know how much work goes into that. What is your vision for the future as far as where you see this might go, or what do you want to see happen here?
One thing is, we really love the community aspect of the festival. It really, we really feel like it's wonderfully supportive of our artists here, so we want to really maintain kind of that community feeling for the festival. But however, we would really love to be able to sustain the festival into the future. Right now, we are only, we're working on all volunteer labor. So myself and maybe six other people working at midnight, two in the morning, between families and full-time jobs. So we would really like to see in the future, our vision for the future is to have some kind of way to sustain this without killing ourselves. And so, you know, we're really looking at how to do that and how to go about doing that. We also want to keep it in Urbana and we want it to be a really beautiful festival. We'd like to get even better musicians than we have right now with this small amount of funding that we have. I think we do a great job of booking who we've got, but I think we could do even better. And we're looking forward to hopefully, as we get more funding, to be able to make that happen.
Diane?
What's your current budget for the festival?
That's a good question.
And what would you like it to be to allow you to do what you want to do?
Thank you. We do a lot on a very small amount. It's a very shoestring budget. Our booking budget is only eighteen thousand dollars this year. We started in, for the 2009, with a nine thousand dollar booking budget. Our total budget is about twenty-eight thousand dollars, so we do eighteen thousand dollars is for the artists themselves and then the marketing and the infrastructure and some of the sound equipment rentals. We had to rent the Landmark Hotel Ballroom this year, for example. So that's twenty-eight thousand dollars. What we would like, what we really like, I mean, like, you know, if we could just, like, you know, I don't know, shoot for the moon, would probably be around fifty or sixty thousand dollars. I think we could do a lot with that. I think we could have a director, we could hire a director to do this and keep this festival running into the long-term future.
Thank you.
Eric?
How large a festival, you talked about twelve hundred folks attending. What, how much, how big a crowd do you think we could handle over the same time period?
In terms of like unlimited growth, if we just grew from what we're doing right now? Because right now, we have a kind of incremental growth, but how?
Well, venues, I mean, just imagine that, well, let me, let me put out a postulate. Let's suppose that we could promote it so well and you could grow your budget for entertainment so well that you could attract ten thousand people.
Right.
Could you, could we handle ten thousand people in Urbana with respect, I'm sure we could with respect to hotel rooms because we get folks in for like football games and such.
Right, right, right.
But could we handle that for venues in Urbana?
That's a good question. We, we do have many, I mean, I would say many, I think there were three or four venues, venue inquiries that wanted to host events this year that we had to turn them down. And it's just because it becomes unwieldy. We were already in over a dozen venues, so for each of those venues, you have to staff them, you have to have emcees, you have to have sound equipment. Most of our sound equipment is donated, most of our sound people are, so you see it becomes bigger than what we can do with even the people that we have. So if we had enough money and we were able to hire, or, then yes, we could go out, we could go to, there was, we've already, you know, Pizza M., for example, already, we're starting, we're going to do a show in their space in a few months. So there are venues out there that would like to have events and we could have, definitely use more of those.
What are the big festivals of this, you know, genre, folk and roots around the country? How many of them are there and where are they?
Well, that's a good question. Let me just talk about the Midwest right now. There is the Chicago Folk and Roots Festival that is no longer in existence. Ended about three years ago, the festival had issues with the city, but, so they're gone. Right now, there is no, there are several regional folk festivals. The Fox Valley Folk Festival comes to mind as one, or the University of Chicago Folk Festival. But here in Central Illinois, or in Indianapolis, or St. Louis, there are no folk festivals to, that are what I would call a regional folk festivals that would bring people in from outside the region. So we are pretty unique in that respect.
So there's, there's a niche for it to grow into?
I think there is definitely, as in this year, our, our marketing strategy was tried to find, to pull in from Charleston and Danville and beyond.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much.
Carol McCusick?
Carol McCusick, nineteen oh seven, North Cunningham Avenue. I was thinking how desirable it would be because I think it's unclear, or people may hope that they can submit that, like, written papers or research that they've done on topics, they can submit it in conjunction with their comment and have it be part of the, of the record. And I don't believe it's the case, and I think a system for that would be very good, but I think that the desirable, you know, even the, you know, the decision about something like that should be in, in some kind of a forum. I think that one of the things about bringing up stuff in public comment is, or what's happening to me is, I think it kind of ends up, you know, like an avalanche of stuff and that's kind of off-putting, but if you were, I think it would help to have a way to, to present written materials to the council and to, before the public, along with the rest of the community, you know. And I was seeing it as something that would be, would be in conjunction with appearing, not just something that people would send in from home and not go to the meeting, but a lot of the commissions, for example, have this word communications, but it seems to mean different things in different commissions. And it would be good if they, if there were, it might be good if, if there were, if it could be something that would apply across commissions, because you'd, you'd get more familiar with what the process is quicker, or it would be easier to relate to more than one commission, because, so that was the thought that I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have one other communication. Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, thirteen oh nine West Tremont Street in Urbana, are still concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem, but they do not wish to speak at this time. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council?
Is this the general speaking?
Yeah, if you'd like to fill out a card or just come up and state your name, whatever topic you would like to address us, you have five minutes. If you'd please state your name and address.
Okay, great.
Hi, my name is Tanya Parker and I live at ten thirty Kerr Street in Urbana. And I actually just wanted an opportunity to introduce you to a creative, exciting project that we have going on in Champaign, in Urbana. And that is, we are renovating a vacant building on South Philo Road to open a space that will include Unity Performing Arts and Career Center. And I'm really excited about this and many other Urbana residents are as well. And part of that is not only for the opportunity for us to have something positive to do for youth in our community, something in addition to the things that exist, but also the opportunity to work with families, young adults, those that are finding it difficult to even decide which track to go on. We're looking forward to providing career training and job opportunities out of a location that we feel is serving a need. We are looking forward to keeping you guys in, in the loop and informed about the progress of this. A little background about myself, I am a native of the Champaign community and I was graduated with the University of Illinois with an economics degree. And my passion for serving the community started at a young age, but even after graduating from college, I've dedicated the past ten years of my life of creating, designing, and implementing a community development initiative to help build healthier families and communities. My philosophies and works have become the foundation for works such as UC2B, Access Initiative, Summer Construction Program for Youth in Champaign. So I'm really excited about this opportunity to introduce an innovative career training and career employment opportunity. I've been working over the last six years with different organizations throughout the county, and most recently, last semester, Illinois Business Consulting students did their final analysis and plans for implementation, which was a location. So we're really excited about where we are and an opportunity to work with city council and other agencies in providing a positive space for the community.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions? Dennis?
Well, certainly welcome. The work that you're doing is needed very highly and certainly I have great interest in it. I was very intrigued just to learn that you'd used, you said student consulting to help choose a location?
The Illinois Business Consulting students actually took the progress of the project and kind of did some feasibility models, looking at potential partners in the community and deciding whether or not this was a viable project. And then they went on to determine next implementation steps. And we've already kind of got a grasp on, you know, curriculum development and things of that nature, but finding a location and securing a location in a community that's close to a neighborhood in need was one of the things that we wanted to be able to offer.
I think you pretty much hit a bullseye. And so what is your sustainability funding source, or do you have one? Are you continuing to look for funding?
Yes. We actually will be approaching Regional Planning and Commission, the city of Champaign, for small potential TIF support and also outside grants and things of that nature. With the model, the way it's created, we have a sustainability model built in. So once we're able to get up and going, we're looking forward to being able to keep the doors open and offer really exciting opportunities for our community.
Charlie?
I recall getting something inviting me to an open house. Was that last weekend or, yeah, I was out of town, or is that coming up?
Actually, I do have brochures from that previous event.
Okay. How did it go?
We actually, it went very, very well. We were excited and Ms. Carol Ammons was there. And we actually kicked off a benefit fundraiser at the Orpheum Museum, and that was the previous weekend, but we'll be having more up-and-coming events. We look forward to providing a positive arts, cultural experience for families. And I do have brochures that I'll pass around from that previous event, because it has a lot of the facts in here about how to get in contact. It's unity, it's unitypac.org, that's U-N-I-T-Y-P-A-C-C.org, and that is our website.
Dennis?
I had to come back. When I first did my very first survey in the Lurman neighborhood area, I came across a group of five teens who were doing dance practicing in their living room and they had, and all they could do is like, is the room between the couch and the wall and the television, they had to take the coffee table into the kitchen to do this.
Yeah.
And I didn't know how they possibly could do any kind of dance routines in such a short space. So I know these, these kids are out there and this kind of activity in this space, I think has a lot of potential in that community.
Yes, and I'm really excited because I know that you're working, are you working with the Sisters Cities project?
Yeah, I'm certainly, and I'm also working with the Lurman Neighborhood Community Garden projects and things like that.
Well, we've, I've identified connections with both of those. We definitely have a, we have instructors already lined up to provide African dance and we want to be able to prepare some of our migrant workers for the, the American workforce. So I'll be looking forward to talking to any of you further about ways to enhance your projects. Even there's projects with Regional Planning and Commission that are trying to identify sustainability, and I can't call the name of it out. It came out of the Big Small, Big All initiative, but we're looking forward to being able to support some of the initiatives within the city.
Well, we're having our annual, our monthly meeting of the Sister City Program on Wednesday, and it's going to be at the library, at the hotel here downtown.
At what time?
Five o'clock on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Carol Ammons?
Tanya, I enjoyed the program last weekend, and people can certainly donate their skills and their money to helping to renovate this building. How can they do that?
Yes, thank you, because I don't want to leave out even the supporters that we have from our community. Carl Hospital has been so generous in opening up and providing us with furnishings and computers, Jackson Hewitt Tax Service as well, but, and Barbara Painter, awesome, hot slots. But we have a website set up that has a PayPal, and we also have an Indigo fundraising going around, and that's all online communication. And of course, you can mail those in as well to, our PO Box is the best place because the place is under renovation. But I invite you all to contact us to take a tour if you'd like, and that number's two one seven, two nine eight, two one seven seven. And you can mail donations to PO Box, five three one, Urbana, Illinois, six one eight zero three.
Okay, Diane?
Hi, Tanya. Yes, I was happy to tour the building a few weeks ago and the spaces are exciting. So how is renovation going and are you on, what's your targeted date to be open for business?
I'm very pleased to say that we are on track. We are looking forward to beginning renovations December 1st. December 1st is actually our cleanup day and then that weekend, thank you very much, you can take all those, yeah. And that weekend, we have some, some folks that have volunteered as construction workers. We have a volunteer contractor as well, Skip from Freedom Builders are going to come in that weekend. So we are looking to be open for the community February 1st of 2014. If we can continue to get support, I must say, we are shy, shy, our goal, just, just about twenty thousand to really be like, really, really off to a good start. You know, we've been hustling and I tell you, when you look at the inside, you wonder how we're going to do this with twenty-five thousand, and that's really because we've been on the ground. There's about a hundred and thirty-eight community residents that are really fired up about this and we are just working our bones off to get the support, the volunteers and the agencies. We're inviting them to come in and utilize the space. There'll be a full computer lab in there. We want to support people that have online, that are going to online colleges. We'll be providing academic support for youth and everything that I've, I actually grew up in Garden Hills and I went to Booker T. Washington. I was raised by this community to be a community leader. And I accreted all programs from the bottom up, starting with the needs and the desires and the motivations of the community. So the delivery and the implementation, I hope that you'll find is equally as beneficial and exciting for the community.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, unfinished business? I don't think we have any that we're going to deal with tonight. Reports of standing committees, that would be Mike Madigan, Committee of the Whole.
The Committee of the Whole approved-
The Committee of the Whole approved to advance to the City Council ordinance number twenty thirteen dash eleven dash one oh three, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter twenty-three, persons with disabilities parking. On behalf of the committee, I move its approval.
Okay, a motion by Madigan, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
The committee approved to advance to the City Council ordinance number twenty thirteen dash eleven dash one oh four, annual tax levy ordinance of the City of Urbana, Illinois, for the year beginning July one, 2013, and ending June thirty, 2014. On behalf of the committee, I move its approval.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Madigan, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, does the mayor vote on that one? Mayor Pressing? Yes. Thank you. That motion carries. Reports of special committees? Reports of officers? Bill Gray, Director of Public Works?
Thank you. Wanted to report on two items. First of all, response to yesterday's horrible weather around here, the city departments, police, fire, public works have been involved in various ways to help folks in need, in particular, in the Gifford area. And this morning, he had a variety of phone calls and planning, and we will be sending public works resources up to the Gifford area, and that will include a backhoe and three dump trucks. We're providing portable lighting that we have available also, and we expect to be there pretty much the rest of this week. We, we feel that the cleanup, this will be debris removal activities within the rideaway, whether it be vegetation-related or just home and other materials. We'll be segregating those out and taking them to the respective areas. But the City of Champaign Public Works also will be going up there tomorrow with a complement of resources similar to ours, and we feel that the two departments together should be able to do a, a real good job this week in cleaning it up. It's also our response is a tribute to the fairly recently formed Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network, which is a public works networking throughout the state, and, for example, Washington, which was terribly hit too. I know there's a variety of agencies that will be helping them throughout the state, and with these agreements in place, it makes the response that much more seamless to go in and do what, you know, hopefully, the public expects. So, we will be there, starting tomorrow, and, and until Thursday, possibly Friday, in cleaning up the debris in the rideaway in Gifford. The second item I wanted to bring to your, I don't know if there's any questions, but, second item I wanted to bring to your attention is, you have the snow manual in your packets. This is updated every year. There's always changes and tweaking that goes on, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It's kind of our plan of attack when we have that emergency, whether it's snow or ice and clement weather. This is our action plan here, and John Collins, Operations Manager and Supervisors and all the public works folks have a role in implementing this. To that end, I'd like to invite council members, particularly new council members, if you'd like to hop in a snow plow and see what it's like in one of these trucks, and, particularly at night, and you'll get a greater appreciation for the difficulty that these guys have. And I know other council members have done this in the past, but please contact my office, or John Collins is off of Public Works, and we'd be happy to accommodate you day or night, two in the morning, or two in the afternoon, or whatever. But you'll really gain an appreciation, because it's, it's a tough job, a tough role, and especially when you have large snow events, and you have twelve hours on, twelve hours off, rotating shifts, three, four, five days in a row, it can be really tough. So, that's my invitation, and that's it.
Thank you. I know public works people have an excellent reputation in the community for getting the roads done very quickly. Charlie?
I, I highly recommend at least an eight-hour or twelve-hour shift. Just bring, bring, bring warm boots, long underwear, and good waterproof gloves, because you never know when you have to get out and help shovel.
Carol?
Well, I'm going to really appreciate them a lot, because I'm not good at that. I also want to thank Mr. Bill Gray for doing a ride-along with me this week in Ward Three, along with Libby, who really responded quickly to a fire that had taken place on Hill Street, and, and got that moved along for demolition for the residents on Hill Street. So, I just want to thank you guys. I think you guys do an absolutely superb job, and I hope maybe riding along will get my own street cleared as they take me home.
Diane?
Well, that segues into my comment, and that is, on page five is the sequence for plowing residential streets and other things. And this year, and, and every year, the first couple of snows, I get questions about why hasn't my street been plowed first, because everyone else's is done, and we know that's not the case, but it seems like it. So, the question I have, and because I can never remember from one winter to the next, is cul-de-sacs are done separately from the streets, because they require
Special equipment.
Different equipment.
Yes.
So, even if a street is plowed, the cul-de-sac off that is not going to be done until that special equipment makes it around.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And thank you, Mrs. Marlin, for bringing that up. That's important. We, page five, kind of middle of the page there, we do have the listing of the priority of the residential streets, the local streets, and we change that every year, so, you know, we can't predict how much snow will fall every year, how many events there'll be in a year, but we try to be fair to the community and shift that each year. So, if you're on top, next year you may be at the bottom, and et cetera, so. I'm also happy to announce that the price for salt this year came down considerably. It's a curse supply and demand, so that's saving us several thousand dollars in our budget, not only because we had a leftover amount of salt, but the price has come down too, so that's helped our budget some.
Okay, thank you very much. Reports of officers, I'd like to report that we had a goal of keeping our health insurance at the same rate as last year, and we have achieved that goal. Our negotiator, our representative, worked it out with Health Alliance, so it's not going to be any higher. So, that'll save us about half a million dollars, which we badly need. Any other reports of officers? Did you have more, Bill? Okay. Okay, new business. We have an appointment for two Assistant City Engineers, Brad Bennett and Craig Schonkweiler. Their bios are included here. Did you want to say something, Bill?
Yeah, I just, maybe they sit at the front desk here. I think, hopefully, they're not a new face for at least council members, but it's with my great pleasure that I introduce these two individuals. On a bit of a sad note, we're going to be losing Gail at the end of this year to retirement, and he's been just an outstanding city engineer with great experience. He's been a great mentor for these two guys, for me, and for the rest of the staff, and we kind of knew this a few years ago, and we wanted to plan accordingly. So, through the last few years in particular, Craig and Brad have been giving increasingly more tougher assignments and more responsibilities, and getting involved in interagency and community-type efforts, and I think you'd agree that, as listed in the bios, they've done a great job, and I'm very comfortable in their promotion, their opportunities here, and I recommend appointment for them. Move approval?
And we're not really adding more people?
No, no, I, well, and just to speak today, I wanted to include the organizational chart in how that's going to list. So, there's twelve people in the division. When Gail and Joe retire, there'll be twelve people in the division, and, so we're not adding FTEs, correct.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Let the record show it was unanimous. Thank you very much. I'm sure you'll both do a great job. We appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. I don't think we set a record, but we tried. We tried.